And we will move.
4.0 announcements and communications. These are information items only. 4.01, little to career update, Dr. Pecal. Thank you. Would you introduce yourself while Michelle's getting that ready?
I'm Claudia Dree, as Director of Community Engagement and Career of the Career, a community-wide, community-owned initiative whose objective is to improve education through equity for all children in Rochester. We work through organizations and work directly with youth, so we are a backbone organization. We provide support and work on them aligning data and resources so all children in Rochester have the same opportunities and outcomes. Through the Kindergarten Readiness Network, their first strategy is to put resources in the hands of parents and caregivers of three- and four-year-olds, so they're ready to, when they enter kindergarten, they're ready and the parents are confident and they're working with them. The objective is also to improve the bond between parent and child. So all of these activities are easily done at home and encourage that communication between parent and child. The Kindergarteners Readiness Cards, which is what we're calling them, they're research-based on a tool approved by Minister of Department of Education, and they have been translated into Spanish, Arabic, and Somali. We have brought them into the community for feedback for parents. So when we put them out in the hands of parents for good, the final set, we have incorporated parents' needs, understanding of their relationship with their child, and made the language the way they want it. So we're putting in the hands of parents a resource that they want and they have co-created. So we are in the process of now co-creating what it means for parents to be kinder, have a kid, be kindergarten-ready. And again, we're working with parents in different communities, including Arabic communities, Somali, and Spanish-speaking communities.
Thank you, Claudia. Board members, do you have any questions?
So, yeah, I can't, those have the cards and they cover different domains.
Okay.
So, and they are in different languages, as you can see.
But we read really fast, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Next on the agenda, 4.02, Board Member Committee Updates. Are there any updates from board members about the work your committees have been doing?
I'd like to comment regarding the Community Engagement Committee and to share and inform the community that it's our plan to have at least four community listening sessions, which will occur at various district sites throughout this coming school year, and one per quarter. And the times and things are yet to be determined, but I think you need to know, you community parents, students, that we very much hear you, and we want to actually hear you through our formalized listening session, so stay tuned. We will announce them, give you plenty of time to notice, react, and prepare to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Any other reports? All right, 5.0 Consent Agenda. Any items to be removed for a separate consideration? Hearing none?
Move approval.
Second? Been moved and seconded? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. 6.01 Approval of Technology Purchases Through Emergency Connectivity Funds. This is a briefing item. Dr. Pecal.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd like to ask Heather Nessler, who is our Executive Director of Communications, Marketing, and Technology, to come and give you some background on this, I think, exciting opportunity.
Good evening, school board members. I want to, this is a little awkward because I'm going to be asking for approval of technology devices without the funding source yet, but there's a reason why I'm coming to you right now.
So, oh, thanks, Kurt. The FCC passed a emergency connectivity fund bill earlier this year, and there is seven, I'm too close, $7.17 billion in that program. That program is dedicated to schools and libraries in order to provide emergency connectivity funding, so, you know, technology, Wi-Fi, things of this nature. Because of that, the district has applied already for devices to help support our students during distance learning, in classroom learning, and to support our staff when they come back in the fall. That grant closes on August 13th, so I'm asking you in advance if we can have permission once we get our approved funding, which we believe we will receive, to purchase the devices once the funding comes through. If we don't get the funding, or if we get up to a certain amount of funding, we would buy devices with that particular amount of funding. So what we're really asking you for is 2,000 devices. We're looking for 2,000 iPads to support our learners and also 2,000 Chromebooks. And the flexibility here is that we can pass them over to our teachers as well, because right now, we're just at the, we're fairly, very, very close to being one-to-one in our district. And this would certainly help support that and also provide some backups in case we break devices, lose devices, et cetera. So that is why I'm here tonight, for you to hopefully give us approval that when the funding comes through, hopefully in September, we can go ahead and purchase the devices without having to come back and ask and then delay and not have the devices in time for our families.
Thank you, Ms. Nessler, and you've provided us ahead of time with all the details about which device is the cost and so on. Do we have any questions, board members?
You taking questions from the audience?
No, no, we're not. Thank you, thank you for asking. Appreciate that. Melissa.
So, what would be the average lifespan of a device? I know there's a life cycle where often it goes to students and then staff and other groups. Would that be true for this, and what would you say the average lifespan is?
So, we're talking about iPads and Chromebooks, that the iPads are a five-year life cycle and our Chromebooks are a four-year life, a four-year life cycle, I believe.
And then at the end of that, we would need to be concerned about where the funding would come to report.
Correct. Yep, I think we're already in that boat, to be honest with you, Melissa, in terms of, we've added a lot of devices because of the pandemic, and it really has helped support our students, as well as Wi-Fi pieces that aren't part of this. And so, yes, we have to be thinking about that creatively.
But I think it's an excellent opportunity for us to experience through the unique circumstances that we are now. We get to that actual one-to-one. It's an opportunity for us to be able to evaluate whether or not this is contributing in a positive sense to our students. Do we have any thoughts about any kind of documentation, surveys, any way to research for ourselves whether or not this is worth the financial investment going forward?
Yeah, I should mention that at the beginning of the pandemic, we did a survey with all of our families, that's Singapore Doc, I glossed over that, my apologies. And we discovered that the need was around 4,000 devices. It was actually greater than that, but we were able to fill that delta up to these 4,000 devices. And so, we asked, do you need this at home? We asked about connectivity as well. I do know that there are individual groups working together. We have to go out and seek feedback on our COVID plan that we will be bringing forward so that can be part of that questionnaire. I do work with some other departments, family engagement, to ask these questions so we can have a two-way conversation.
Mr. Barlow.
Madam Chair, would it be possible to take a moment to share that normally it is our desire to brief items to allow community to provide input, which oftentimes many do by emailing us, communicating their concerns. Yet there are times when things may be of a exigent nature, no control of ours, but as Ms. Nessler has said this evening, there is a date that we have to be aware of. And so, I think it's important for the community to simply know that we're, we never try to rush things or keep them in the dark. We always give them ample opportunity. Also, if I may, you know, our agendas are published on the Friday before our board meetings, and that is an excellent time for the community to actually key in as to what we'll be talking about, and give you an opportunity as well to contact either the board as a whole or board members individually. And I just felt it necessary to kind of put that out there, because we never want to give the impression that we're just trying to ramrod something.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Other questions, comments? I'm sensing that there's, there is at this point, because of the deadline with the funding, there's a certain urgency to getting this approved.
We've applied, because if the funding doesn't come through, we won't buy the devices. So we've already applied. We will know after August 13th.
Other questions, comments? I'm sensing that there's, there is at this point, because of the deadline with the funding, there's a certain urgency to getting this approved.
We've applied, because if the funding doesn't come through, we won't apply the devices. So we've already applied. We will know after August 13th whether or not we received the full application or the full dollars in the application. You can, you do not have to move this to action tonight.
So we can wait until next month.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you, Ms. Nessler. Anything else? 6.02 Full Strategic Plan. Dr. Pecel.
Madam Chair, the Board of Directors, when I arrived, asked me to begin a year-long process as interim superintendent of thinking about what our school district needs, continue the progress. And one of the first things that emerged from that discussion was taking the very high-level vision statements, I think we could call them, that the board and the community have developed, and coming up with the roadmap for achieving those goals over time, the strategies, the tactics, and especially the measures. And so we had a good study session of the other night in which I facilitated a discussion among board members about really what is our long-term vision for Rochester Public Schools and the kids in the community. And the board, I believe, has developed a proposal to direct me to work with community and staff to actually, over the year ahead, really bring that vision to life. And so, Madam Chair, I'm not sure, I believe our Policy Committee has the ball on that resolution, if I'm not incorrect, but we have a motion before to direct me and the team and the community to develop a full strategic plan over the next six months, starting in September.
Yes, Dr. Pecel, and the rationale is written out there. We also have the resolution, which is a briefing item at this point. Again, we did have a great discussion at our planning session, and we're in consensus that we do want to go ahead and work on this strategic plan.
Were we to move this to action tonight, would that give you more time to start the plans before the school year begins? So I'll move this to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to become an action item. Any discussion?
I'm curious, if it says September 1st, does that preclude us from starting to work in earlier?
No, that's a great question. September, we're going to start working like 30 seconds after we get over the next subject on this agenda, which is taking lots of people's attention, but we would begin planning for the process, and September 1st would be a rough starting point. As we talked about on Friday night, this district, like many others, has the unique opportunity to allocate the last round of federal funding that was tied to coronavirus recovery. And in our case, it's $17 million. And those are resources that could be used to jumpstart the long-term work of the district while also meeting the needs of helping kids reengage and re-enter school starting in the fall. And so that's really the logic of launching with an interim superintendent, launching something that is long-range planning, because we have a really exciting, unique opportunity with funding, and the requirements of that funding must begin with a needs assessment and an asset map. And so we would begin very quickly, pending, you know, the board's direction, with that needs assessment, with that asset map, and then that lays the groundwork for where we want to go, where our strengths, where our weaknesses, going forward. So that's kind of the logic of the timing, and yes, we would be getting started. The September 1 is like the formal, let's go, kind of a.
So the pre-planning phase begins 30 seconds after.
Absolutely, yeah. In fact, it's already in some ways started in terms of that needs assessment, because that has to happen regardless. But I think what this board has decided to do is really exciting, which is actually, let's not just plan for these two years, let's use these resources to think about the long-term strategy, while also meeting the requirements of the money in the next two years.
Any other discussion? The motion is on the table to make that, this an action item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby support the development of a full strategic plan between September 1st, 2021, and March 1st, 2022, to achieve the high-level objectives that are outlined in the district's existing strategic plan.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And Dr. Pecel, you're going to have to wait till the end of the meeting to start working on this. The 30-second thing isn't gonna, it's not gonna work. Okay, moving on to safe and welcoming learning environment. 7.01 Policy 808, face covering policy and Procedure 808, face covering exemption and face shield authorization. Vice Chair, Nathan.
I believe the superintendent's going to give the background first.
Superintendent Pecel.
Madam Chair, members of the board, actually prompted by Director Barlow's points about process, let me take a second here, because I think it was a tremendously important point you made about why this is coming before the board in the form that it is. As many of you know, I arrived here on July 1. On July 9, the Centers for Disease Control, which is the almost universally accepted guiding body for public health in the United States, issued new guidance for coronavirus protections in general and face covering wearing in particular. So that happened July 9. At my first board meeting, the board, thus at its first opportunity, directed me to look at that guidance and come up with a new approach. We got wind, like many of you, that the fast-moving issues of the, in particular, Delta variant, which we'll talk about in a moment, meant that new guidance was likely coming. And as some of you probably saw, it came today at 2:00 p.m. And so this agenda item was always on the agenda, but we held off on this recommendation until tonight so that I could consider that guidance in making a recommendation to the board. The recommendation I'm about to make now, which is also summarized in a cover memo and in a draft proposed policy that is available through our online portal, also reflects input from our COVID advisory group here in Rochester. And I will just say, as someone new to the community, we are so fortunate to have the community partners that we have helping us think through tough issues like that, in particular Olmsted County and the Mayo Clinic. This recommendation is my recommendation for your consideration, but it reflects the expertise of those folks. In that guidance that the CDC released today, as some of you probably saw, they recommended that everyone in K-12 schools wear face coverings, or I'll say masks, which face coverings also include shields, and that's addressed in our policies, but just since the general term is masks, I'll use that term right now. They recommended that everyone K-12 begin to utilize, wear masks regardless of vaccination status. The logic of that was the spread of the Delta variant and some early evidence that even people who are fully vaccinated can transmit COVID when they actually have the Delta variant, very, very early evidence. And so that's what led the CDC to make that recommendation. That, of course, is a recommendation that applies to the entire United States and many places where they have vaccination rates that are far lower and infection rates that are far, far higher than where we are. And so my recommendation to you, which is spelled out in the memo that I wrote and in the draft policy, is a more differentiated recommendation at this point that reflects the really extraordinary work that's happened here in Rochester and Olmsted County to get people vaccinated and the relatively low rates of disease and infection that we have. We are at the moderate level, which previous CDC guidance, not tied to K-12 schools, would suggest no mask wearing is required in buildings. So the recommendation that I'm putting before you is, at this time, and this is a fluid situation, to not require masks of students who are 12 years and older, who therefore have the opportunity to be vaccinated, and many of whom in our community have been vaccinated. Seventy-two percent of our population in Olmsted County over 12 have had one shot, and 72% are fully vaccinated. I believe it's appropriate to lean into that, making masks recommended but optional for those students because of those high vaccination rates, the low infection rates, and the fact that those vaccines are optional. However, those vaccines are not optional, and vaccination has not happened for our youngest learners. And so I am recommending that we continue to have masks required for students in our elementary schools between ages of 2 and up to 12. Keeping with expert guidance that has been in place throughout the pandemic, we never would mask someone who is between 0 and 2, so that would not change. The logic of that recommendation is that those children cannot be vaccinated, and therefore they don't have that level of protection. And so it seems prudent to essentially maintain what we're already doing. Another reason why the timing of this recommendation to you is tight is because we have Longfellow Elementary, our 4515 school, opening on Thursday. And I was out there last week with staff, and while we didn't take a vote, I can tell you that the consensus of the principal and the educators I spoke to was that, while some parents have concerns, and we understand that, some kids do, the children are doing well, the schools have learned to manage mask wearing well, it's what we've been doing all summer in the summer of discovery, and so there was strong support for continuing. We need to give that school guidance, because they're getting ready to open in a couple days. What about the adults? The recommendation I would be making for you right now is that adults are encouraged but not required to wear face coverings in our schools, again, with the same logic that very high numbers of them are vaccinated or have access to a vaccine. In the board's policy, there are exceptions that are very clear to mask requirement for, in this case, younger children that would be maintained and without change over time. Another reason, and this is something that is talked about a lot, and it's in the memo that I sent to the board today, is this idea that young children don't get sick from COVID. And while it is unquestionably true that young children get sick at much lower rates and with not the same level of severity, it is simply not true that they don't get sick and that we need to be considering the well-being of those children and the prospect of getting sick. If I could just cite a couple of statistics that I shared in the memo to the board today, and this is from an organization that's based at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. While COVID-19 has led to mild infections in the vast majority of children, some children have had more significant illnesses. Among the nearly 80 million children and adolescents in the U.S., there have been more than 4 million documented cases of COVID-19, nearly 17,000 hospitalizations, more than 4,000 cases of multi-system inflammatory syndrome, a delayed post-infectious complication of COVID-19 infection, and more than 300 deaths. The risk of long-haul COVID for children, COVID-19 for children remains unknown. Here in Rochester Public Schools, we have the honor of serving a subset of children who are medically fragile, in some cases due to suppressed immune systems, and in other cases due to other conditions that we know from the science, increased risk of serious illness from COVID. We serve 1,500 kids who have asthma, we serve 200 kids who have epilepsy, we serve 70 kids who have cardiac and circulatory congenital anomalies, we have, we serve 50 kids who have diabetes, and those are just parent reports. When we cannot provide those youngest learners with a vaccine and the protection the vaccine affords, it seems to me prudent to take this extra step toward their, toward protection. All of that said, this is a fluid situation, as we've seen just over the month that I've been in Rochester, and my recommendation to the board could change in both directions. We could decide that it is no longer prudent to make masks optional at the secondary level because infection rates have increased or because we learn new things about breakthrough infraction tied to the Delta variant. Similarly, when we have the opportunity, as is anticipated, to vaccinate younger children, and when those rates of vaccination are sufficiently high, we could remove the requirement for our youngest learners. So I wish I could tell the board, this is the last time you'd need to be dealing with this, but I think it's very likely that we will need to continue to be responsive to this situation over time. The last thing I think I want to say about the mask requirement is that I know this is a tough one, and I struggled. And as board members know, I would love tonight to be recommending no mask requirement at all. We've all learned to live with them, I'm not wearing one tonight, but like all of you, I have. But I think that balancing the opportunity to return to normal without masks with the health and safety of our youngest learners who can't be vaccinated is the most prudent thing to do at this time. I also want to say that for those, especially parents, who are very concerned about masks, I hear you. I've heard you, I've met with you, I understand that this is a difficult one for many of you, and I look forward to continuing to be in conversation with you as we navigate these challenging months ahead. It's not a subject for us tonight, but I just want to mention for the board and for the community who are here, masks are not the only thing we're going to be doing in Rochester Public Schools to keep our youngest learners safe. We had a comprehensive strategy last year that we will go back to and refine for the coming school year, and that's answering some really important issues that are candidly not as controversial as masks, but things like, right now, we aren't bringing volunteers into our schools. We're not having big assemblies. We, until summer school, we're not doing field trips. All of these things are extraordinary opportunities for our kids, and very importantly, we need to revisit the social distancing requirements that we have in our lunchrooms and our public spaces. I talked to one mom who said that the decisions that her elementary school has made about which playground kids have, can play on, has been the most controversial issue for her third grader, not the masks, it's when can I go back to the other playground? So there's a whole series of additional issues that we are going to be looking at as part of a comprehensive plan, but as you know, this issue of face coverings was of particular importance, and so we wanted to put you, put it before you today. And I know, as our Vice Chair and head of our Policy Committee will share, now, the board, should you choose to do so, could take more immediate action to provide initially Longfellow, but also the schools and families in our community with early notice of your decision. Rochester may, may be a bit lonely in this decision if we take the recommendation that I'm putting before you. We may have a good number of K-12 districts around us who choose to have no requirement for masks. I think the situation, however, is so fluid that as people look at the CDC guidance from today, that may shift. And so I would suggest that we ought to do what we believe is right for Rochester, based on the evidence and the data that we have for our community, and other school boards will be doing the same based on their evidence and their community in the weeks ahead. So, thank you. It's been, it's been a real honor to get to know this community through the challenging lens of a decision like this. People have approached it with, almost without exception, the larger interest of kids at heart, even where they disagree passionately about the specifics.
I've got a few questions.
Ms. Nathan, did you want to add something first?
Well, my question is, do you want to walk through the changes in the policy, or would you like to have questions on the?
Go ahead and walk through the changes, because my questions are about the changes.
Okay, great. So Policy 808 was last updated by the board on April 6. And this is the policy that was originally established to follow the executive orders from last year. We've known for a while that we need to update the policy because the executive orders were rescinded, so we're using this policy as a model to enshrine the district policy on face coverings. So in Section 1, General Policy, the policy requirement has moved from all individuals being required to make a face covering to the specific recommendations that the superintendent outlined tonight about students between 2 and 12 years of age will wear a face covering, and students aged 12 and older are encouraged but not required to wear face coverings, as is the situation for staff and other adults. We also want to, the superintendent didn't mention this, but it remains in the policy that everyone has to wear a mask on transportation provided by the district. That is a federal requirement, and that was in the previous policy and remains in this policy. We've removed any reference in the policy to anything related to the executive orders. We've changed some language, for example, in exemptions, to more specifically define with some medical terms what troubled breathing means for circumstances when a face covering should not be used. We made some language changes to early childhood programming. Sorry, we corrected some spelling errors and some missing words. We've removed the requirements for visitors to wear a mask, as is included in the recommendations, and we removed the requirements for face coverings at school board meetings. Those are the major changes. The policy remains intact for the most part, for students and staff and adults, in terms of the exemptions and the enforcement of the mask policy. And the other piece of this is the form that is in Procedure 808A, and that is the form that was used last year for parents and families to identify a request for a mask exemption, and that form has not changed.
Dr. Amundson, did that answer your questions?
No.
Okay.
Should I go?
Yeah.
Okay. Can somebody explain to me the exemption in 3B? So at the beginning of the policy, we say that we're requiring students between 2 and 12 years of age to wear a face covering, but if they're in early childhood programming, they're exempt, even though they're between the age of 2 and 12. Do we have a reasoning for why we make some 2 to 5, 2 to 6-year-olds wear face coverings, but not all of them if they're in programming? Looks like our early childhood.
Amy, I've forgotten off the microphone.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was going to ask Amy if you
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was going to ask Amy if she could come up, I can you, I'm not, I want to be sure I'm seeing specifically, Dr. Amundson, where you're seeing that in the?
3B exemptions, persons who are exempt from wearing a face covering.
Okay.
Students 5 and under in early childhood programming, pre-kindergarten students who are 5 years or younger are, if they're participating in early childhood.
Thank you very much. Amy.
So, I think this is on, yes? No? I'm getting mixed answers.
Amy, I can community it. So, the challenge we have is differentiating our 5-year-olds within the programs where they're participating. So our 5-year-olds that are participating in SAC do what all of K-12 does because they're working in that K-5 environment, and so all of SAC masks under childcare rules. Our 5-year-olds that are in our preschool environment, they're in the environment where the rule states if they can wear it, you know, developmentally appropriately, then they can wear it, but if, if they're struggling with it because of development, then you don't. So you end up with kind of two different groups of 5-year-olds based on their environment.
And I assume that it would be an encouragement type situation?
Yes.
We would encourage children in early childhood programs to wear.
And our, many of them do.
And for children, it's somewhat maybe even easier than adults, because they have fewer years to have gotten used to a bare face.
True.
More acceptable for us, but we received communication from somebody who works with children and said that the young children, the young children are doing very well, the very young children are doing very well. We're very proud of our little ones. Can I keep going?
Yeah. Others have questions? Dr. Amundson, it's all you.
I also wanted to say that I, I very much appreciate the, the numbers that you provided about medically fragile children. As somebody who has been a parent myself to a medically fragile child, I, I think I have a somewhat different perspective than the average person. In fact, I have a mask here that says, this mask helps others. The point being that those of us who are wearing masks perhaps are not doing it to protect ourselves, or maybe doing it for the people around us, and even though, even though I may be vaccinated, I can still be asymptomatic infectious and infecting the children around me. So I, I think that's an important, important point to distinguish, and I would hope that in our policy where it says that staff and other adults are encouraged but not required, I would hope that those adults would think about who they're helping, who they're protecting, and who's helped their potentially serving lives. So, it's an excellent point, and I hope that that can be emphasized in our communication. I'm wearing a mask and it's, you know, I'm, I'm all right, I'm doing okay, you maybe can't hear, understand my words quite as well, but I'm hoping that my point is, is coming across loud and clear. So, that was a little bit of a soapbox, but I think it's important, and I hope that, I, I know our staff love our children, and I know that if they're in the front of the room and that they feel like the children will be able to hear them better and understand them better without a mask, they'll choose that, and if they're leaning over them, helping them with homework, maybe they'll put their mask on just for that time. We have incredible staff, and they know that they will choose the appropriate times for the best of the children.
Other comments or questions?
Dr. Pecel, thank you for the update, really helpful information. When do you expect to have the other piece of it for what's going to be happening in the buildings, separate from the masks, just so we can plan on being ready for that?
Yeah, Madam Chair, our hope is to, one of the things we need to talk about with the Executive Committee is how much of that plan do you want to spend time on at the board level and when, but we could have it ready by the, by our August 4th meeting, and I think that that would be good for our schools, and so we'd be thrilled to share that with you, you know, at the meeting as well, sort of a comprehensive overview of all of the strategies that we're going to be taking. We need it on that timeline for schools, and so we'd be very pleased to share that with the board. I think our meeting's the 3rd, not the, not the 4th, so like the, our first August meeting, we could definitely do that.
That's next week.
I know. Ready, there's no rest for wicked here.
Other comments or questions?
Just a, Madam Chair, point of observation, Dr. Pecel alluded to earlier that while the broad category reference, our mask, face shills also fall in that category, and I'm sure many staff, teachers will utilize the shills that allow them to effectively communicate with having their voices muted and being able to properly show through their mannerisms that they mean business when they say it's time to study and learn. But the point being that, you know, masks aren't the only thing, the face shills also are a big part of that as well.
Anything else? Again, I, I think like so many, I was really looking forward to this year, starting sending our kids back to school, masks off, just like things used to be, and things aren't like that right now. It's, it will get better, but our number one goal right now is to keep our schools open, and in Rochester, we, we have the best guidance, I think, nationally and locally. So if we can keep our little kids safer because they're wearing masks, if we can keep the spread lower, if we can continue to encourage families to get vaccinated, to get their older kids vaccinated, the back to normal is going to come sooner than later, this won't be forever. Right, Graham? Homestead County Medical Health Director, right there.
Chair Marvin.
Yes.
To inform the, the public, the board is aware of this, our normal procedure is to brief any policy changes at a few meetings and then move it to action, but because of the situation with Longfellow, we do have an option in Policy 208, Section 4, Item C, that allows the immediate adoption of a modified policy by the school board in the case of an emergency. The school board believes that modifications to Policy 808 should be immediately adopted under the emergency provisions of Policy 208 because the 2021 school year begins at Longfellow, and this policy must be immediately implemented at that school site to ensure safety of students, staff during in-person learning. Therefore, I move this item to action.
It's been moved to action, and I hope you got all the numbers in there. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of making this an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is now a motion item. There it is. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 approve the modified Policy 808 COVID face covering guidance.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Pecel, for your work, and thank you, say Dr. Nathan, you might as well be, for your work as well.
Madam Chair, point of inquiry?
Yes, sir.
So, Dr. Pecel will still, come August 4th, offer any final plans, adjustments to this policy, correct?
Yes, we will, we'll, we're going to take this as a direction of the board, and we will bring any insights we gain about this policy and the full COVID strategy to you at the, at the meeting.
And those of you who are leaving, thank you for your presence, thank you for your patience, it's warm in here, so, thank you. We're going to talk about substitute teacher pay rate, though that's important too. 8.01's substitute teacher pay rate, this is a briefing item, Dr. Pecel.
Madam Chair, I am pleased to bring Carl Bakken, who is our Executive Director of Human Resources, up. I'm, I'm just going to be very transparent, I, I know these wonderful folks in the Cabinet really well, but I don't always know their formal titles yet, so I have my cheat sheet here, and that's why I'm looking down periodically, so, this is Carl Bakken, our Executive Director of Human Resources, to share some important information about the really important work substitutes do in our district.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. What I have before you on 801 is we are seeking to maintain the daily rate of substitute pay for our teachers. A little bit of background, we had increased that temporarily during the 2021 school year with the pandemic, and seeing a need to increase the rate in an attempt to fill our vacant subposition, so we increased it from 150 for special ed teachers and 140 for general ed teachers to 165 a day for everybody. If you look back on the resolution about a year ago, that was a temporary resolution. As we finished the school year and we looked at what some other districts were doing, we saw a number of districts main, substantially increasing that daily rate. There, we, we were proud of ourselves that we did have one of the higher daily subrates last year, now we, even if keeping it at 165, some, some districts have made a substantial increase. Along with that, we're, we just want to recognize it's difficult work, we value our subs, and we want to recognize them and pay them fairly, and hoping to continue to attract and maintain our substitutes, we value them very much.
Director Amundson.
I, I think I already know the answer to this, but just so that we're clear, there's room for an increase in the budget, will be a balanced budget regardless of an increased pay rate.
There will be, we anticipate there will be an increase to the budget, it's really hard to predict. We, when you look at, go back to 1819, which is our last non-COVID impacted year, on our teacher subs, we spent about 2.4, or sorry, 2.5 million. In 1920, we were down 454,000 from 1819, and from 2021, we were down 785,000 from that year. We have not maintained all our subs, we've lost some subs who just have said, I'm on hold, or I don't know if I'm coming back, so we just don't know the full, the full impact of that, but it would, it would make sense that it would have, there would be an increased cost this year, just hard to predict.
But I'm, I'm aware that we have room this year in the budget, we're projecting to be fine, I'm.
Dr. Pecel.
Yes, Dr. Amundson, we are, we, we are in a fortunate position that regardless of where this comes in, we'll be able to cover these costs. I don't know in three or four years if we would necessarily be able to say that, we definitely can say that in this budget.
I just want to make that clear to the public, that we're not going into any kind of.
Right, no. We really have, as many of you know, and I'm sure even people out there who work in entirely different areas, we are feeling the workforce shortage here in Rochester and Homestead County, and we have to get creative to make Rochester Public Schools the employer of choice for a broad array of people, including substitutes, who may not work a lot of days for us, but who play a valuable role, so I don't think this is the first time that we're going to be bringing to you the need to be creative and responsive to attract talent, attract and retain talented people.
Director Workman.
Yes, could you briefly describe who could apply to be a substitute teacher, what the qualifications are, so that the people who are left in the audience or who are viewing this might say, wow, this sounds like something I'd be interested in doing?
Yeah, the basic qualifications would be having a bachelor's degree and obtaining a short-call sub-license, and we have people in our office that will help them with that, and we had recently had a job fair over at Riverside, and Julie Jimenez in our office, who is in, oversees the subs, was very actively recruiting subs, and we, I think we got a, had a couple people that were willing to sign on.
Thank you. Anything else? And I'm guessing you don't need an answer on this tonight?
We don't, we, with Longfellow starting, we'll have some subs in place, but if it needs to wait.
I'd like to move it to action.
Oh, well, we'd like to move it to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve temporarily increasing the substitute daily teacher wages for those having in-person contact with students to $165 per day.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 8.02, daily paraprofessional substitute pay rate. Dr. Pecel.
Madam Chair, I want to ask Mr. Bakken to take us through a similar issue here with a different valued group of our employees.
Thank you, good evening again, board members. In this case, we are looking at our daily substitute paraprofessionals, and we're seeking to increase our hourly rate, rate of pay. Further, we're seeking to set the substitute rate of pay for paras to the contract, so instead of maybe every three, four, five years them seeing an increase of pay, it would be tied to the contract, so when, and if you look through there, our general ed paras would be tied to $1 below Step 1 of the A12 band and grade, and for special education, it would be $1 below the B21's band and grade. So we would go, if we implemented that for this school year, we would go from 1250 an hour for general ed to 14 hours, $14 an hour, excuse me, and for special ed, go from $14 an hour to 1525. Again, when we look at what the state, when we compare ourselves to other comparable districts, we are a little bit behind in our sub-para pay, and they sometimes are, they don't get a pay increase for a couple, two, three years at a time, so this would be a long-term, hopefully, solution to recognize, again, a very difficult job, often an under-appreciated job, and we, we thank them and want to show that we, we recognize what they're doing and value them.
Questions, comments?
I have a question. When, I guess for both items, when would this be in effect?
If you approve it, it would be effective tomorrow.
And it, would it be retroactive or just from today forward?
It would be moving forward.
Move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is an action item. Be it resolved, School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the following substitute paraprofessional hourly rate to $1 below Step 1 of the A12 band and grade for general education paraprofessionals, $1 below Step 1 of the B21 band and grade for special education paraprofessionals.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bakken. 8.03, approval of crossing guard services, Dr. Pecel.
Chair Marvin, members of the board, I am now going to ask Scott Schurden, our Executive Director of Operations, to come up for the next several items, the first of which is going to involve approval of crossing guard services, so we are really into the life of a school district right here.
Thank you, Superintendent, good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to brief you on the approval for crossing guard services, I bring this to you on an annual basis prior to the start of the school year. We employ express employment professionals, and they provide all the crossing guards for us that are not filled by site staff and also fill in for substitutes and vacant spots when we need them. So, in addition to the regular school year, they're also used for summer school session as well, and we estimated $261,100 for last year, we only spent about $189,450 and 44 cents, which is only a partial year due to the COVID, so, but we have to plan ahead, and for the 2021-22 school year, which we hope will be a full school year, all day, every day, we have budgeted $280,500 for this coming year, and that, that would be on a draw basis based on the bills we get from express, but this is like a holding pot that we pay them throughout the year. So we're seeking approval for that.
Director Workman.
Yes, do we simply pay or provide the payment for the, for the crossing guards as we go along, or do we also have to have like a retainer fee for the service from Express?
I do not know, I could defer to my colleague, do we just pay as we go? I think we just pay as we go, when they send us the bill, we pay them.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Amundson.
So I, I know in the past, we've had trouble with substitutes with, with even the employment service being able to find enough employees and that people from the office of Edison Building or, or other offices have had to go out and fill in. Do we expect that to be an ongoing problem, especially in light of the discussion we just had about the work. an ongoing problem, especially in light of the discussion we just had about the workforce shortage?
Unfortunately, yes. I believe you are correct. We are going to be faced with shortages here. As the economy recovers and people go back to work, we're hoping we'll be able to fill these spots. I did talk with Jeff Kepers, our transportation manager, about seeing, we were bringing a proposal to see if we can adjust pay a little bit to try to make it a little more attractive as well. They already get paid, I believe, for an hour and a half of work, even if it's a 35-minute spot or 45-minute spot. So, but we're looking to boost that a little bit to try to attract more interest in the positions.
And when we have our own job fairs, do we highlight this position as well, even though it's through another agency?
We do. Yep. Like we did for First Student when we had our job fair as well, our contracted service.
Other questions?
Does this need to be moved?
It's a briefing item.
I don't think there's a timeliness on it right now, but we do have schools starting at Longfellow Thursday.
I'd like to move it to action.
Second.
It's been seconded to move to action. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This is now an action item. Be it resolved, School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the purchase of crossing guard services for the 2021-2022 school year from express employment professional in the estimated amount of $280,500.
Move approval.
Been moved and seconded twice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Schurden. 8.04, referendum update. This is an information item. Dr. McHale.
Director Marvin, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. Schurden to give us an overview here of something that is really of paramount importance, and that's how we are using the resources that the citizens of Rochester have decided to invest in the long-range future of this school district. I'll just say, Scott had the opportunity to take me out to see our construction, and of course, I had three meetings later that day, one with the mayor. So I wore a suit like this and shoes like the ones I'm wearing, and I looked very stupid walking around the construction sites in the mud, but they expected the superintendent to kind of look like that. But it was a great, great, exciting morning to see the amazing work that's being done. And so it looks like we even have some multimedia here. I was vamping for you there, so you got ready. That wasn't a planned anecdote. All right, Scott, thank you.
It was scintillating, though.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it was very good.
Superintendent, good evening, board members. I'm here to provide you another referendum update. I'm doing it again by myself, and that's because there isn't a lot that has changed, except for the amount of construction that has been completed on the buildings. This PowerPoint presentation, I can't see it here, I apologize, but the PowerPoint presentation was created by Knutson Construction.
See if I can help you.
He's getting it.
Okay.
I'm not doing anything. I just...
I'm sorry, Scott.
Thank you, Kurt. All right. So on Overland, we did receive the temporary certificate of occupancy. It's called TCO. We received that last week, so we began moving furniture in. It doesn't mean the building's complete. It just means that we're allowed to go in there and start putting our things in the classrooms. And so we've already put together several classrooms. There's still a lot of work to be done in the next three weeks, four weeks, before school starts, and the items listed on there. We are still working on fire alarm systems, which I learned about early morning hours a couple times. I apologize to the fire department for that. But we have to do asphalt paving as well on the east side of the building, and you're always more than welcome to go out and walk through the building because it's really turning out to be a really beautiful building. There's still a lot of site work that needs to be done, the grass, some dirt moving around. They still are protecting your grove of trees there on the northwest corner of the building. But otherwise, it's really come a long way. And they have some pictures here. There. That's the gem. It turned out beautifully. And you'll notice the limited amount of lighting fixtures up there. It's because there are LED lights, and we didn't need as many, but it really lights up the gem even brighter than some of our high schools. It's a beautiful facility. This is the media center. It's got a lot of stuff in it, so it's really hard to see. But you notice all the glass along on the right side of the picture there. That glass overlooks a corridor. This is a view from outside. Like I said, there is still some site work that needs to be done, some paving, the all-important playground equipment, which is on the southwest corner of the building. And onto the middle school. If you've had the opportunity to go out there, you'll see that that's really coming along. The next six weeks, they've outlined what still needs to be done. There's still a lot of precast that has to be put up, but they do have the storm shelter complete, and there's some photographs that Knutson particularly can, McWaters provided us. And this is the top of the storm shelter prior to pouring the concrete on top, the million pounds of concrete. And the next picture is with it about half full. Like you may remember, this is required now through the state that we have to build a storm shelter whenever we build a new building. We were unaware of this during, when we sought the referendum, but this law came into effect last April. So it added a little bit of extra cost to our project. And this is drone footage of where we're at with the middle school. I do want to point out, this is the back of the school, and it, you'll notice the three floors here, but on the front, there's only two. So the view out that back to the north is just stunning when you walk through there, and it's going to be quite a view for the students and the staff that are there. And the ever all necessary loading dock. And then we go to Longfellow. Longfellow is still doing a lot of precast, bringing up the walls, a lot of site work. These are some drone footage. This is, like he says, it's facing north. You notice the cranes there. Those are the cranes that we use to put up the precast. That's looking north into town. This is a picture facing east. And that big concrete building in the middle there, that's the storm shelter. That's the gem that we had, that we built first. And this is an overview of, this is an overview of that, and a simple shot of the precast that we started with all the piping that's going in. Area Bishop doesn't not exist anymore. It's completely gone now. We've been doing a lot of digging, stormwater work. You'll notice, like I said, the 36th Avenue is closed there. That's a major thorough fair out, country club banner. We appreciate the patience of the community in that, because that is our doing. We had to close 36th Avenue to do utility work. This is partial pictures. As we move along, you'll see the building eventually goes away, and that's what it looks like. Kind of right now, there's been more work done there. But again, you're more than welcome to go out and look at Area Bishop. So things are coming along. Budget-wise, it's not a lot changed yet on the budget. We should know a lot more about that, particularly tomorrow when we get our first bids back for the pool at Century. That's the earth work and the precast that's coming back. It's only a very small portion of the project, but it will give us a good insight into how we're going to do budget-wise, particularly with that work when we get that tomorrow. And I plan to bring that to you on August 3rd, and it is just a low bid project, so there's no best value attached to that. But I'll be bringing that to you next, I guess it's next week.
Yeah.
So if you have any questions for me.
Scott, I have a pressing question. Do they ever let you operate the drone?
You need a license to do so.
A license?
We do not have a license, but they have a licensed pilot that is allowed to fly that. It's pretty impressive.
Director Workman.
Along the same lines, do they allow you to operate any of the heavy machinery to play with, to, you know, diggers and movers and...
I cannot confirm nor deny. No, no, I did not do either.
Anything else? That was wonderful. Thank you, Scott. Moving along to 8.05, approval of change order for traffic signal for new Longfellow Elementary School. This is a briefing item. Dr. McHale.
And board members, Madam Chair, this is another, one of Mr. Schurden's many projects, and this is one of those that sometimes you may say, why is a, literally a, traffic signal on the agenda? Well, partly because it costs a significant amount of money, but it's also how we really maintain the kind of really well-run operations that this school district has by keeping your eyes on this level of detail. So let's hear about the traffic signal.
Thank you, Dr. McHale. Good evening, board members. I'm seeking approval of change order 002. This is for the traffic control signal at the new Longfellow Elementary. I provided you some drawings of where this traffic signal is going to go. When we first bid this project, we were still in negotiations with the city and county as far as what type of traffic signal we would need, if any, where it would be. So we really didn't have, it wasn't in the actual budget yet. We knew that we were going to have to do something, so we figured we'd have to do a change order, which you're familiar with, is that when a change to the project occurs, they write up a change order, everybody signs off, and it gets paid. Well, this one happens to be over the $175,000 limit, so it does require a board approval, and that's what I'm bringing here tonight. What the plan is, is to build this traffic signal, which allows students to cross or family to cross, and this would be right at the northeast corner of the property, kind of in between the armory and our property. There is a driveway that goes to the park and rec areas of the ball fields right on the north side, and I believe that's the extension we're going to use to put the traffic signal in. It is a four-lane highway, not highway, state aid highway, that they have to use the traffic signal to cross, so there's four lanes. So it costs a little more than the traffic signal that we put in at Hoover, if you remember what, we did a similar traffic signal at Hoover. They are going to remove, they're planning to remove the traffic signal that is currently up further north on Marion Road that is at the current Longfellow site, and that traffic signal also is utilized by those that are utilizing softball fields at McQuillan Field. But that signal, according to the city and county, they're going to take that out, and so they're allowing us to put ours in at the northeast corner. The cost of that is $290,420. When we hired Egan as our electrical contractor in the best value process, we knew that this was going to be part of the project, so we assigned it to him at the time. We just didn't know what the costs were. Now we know, and so we're seeking approval of that money to do this part of the project.
Move approval?
I heard you moved this to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to action. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves A1A document change order number 002 for the traffic control signal on Marion Road near the new Longfellow. I get emotional. I just need a minute. Near Longfellow Elementary School in the amount of $290,420.
Move approval, and then I have a question.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Ms. Workman.
Just for the benefit of the public, the school board is not seeing these documents for the very first time tonight. We've had the opportunity to look at them, review them, and if we have any questions about them, we can get those questions to the superintendent, who will direct them, in this case, to Mr. Scheriden, for a response. That's my question. English teacher.
Thank you. And there's the discussion, and I read the resolution, as I recall. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Scheriden. Our last item on the agenda is 9.01, tri-government model. This is a briefing item. As you know, for the last several years, there have been informal discussions among different groups about why don't the school board members, the city council members, and the county commissioners talk to each other more. We've had some sort of high-profile issues in the last couple of years in particular where there has been a lack of communication between the groups. So the recommendation here is that the three organizations agree to meet quarterly, have, send representatives to meet quarterly, a very informal basis, to meet altogether as three groups once a year. And again, this is to be fleshed out. But the goals will be mainly just to increase trust, transparency, to share information. This will not be a body that votes. It will not be a group that makes decisions on anything, but simply to try to make sure that we know what the other groups are doing, that when we can help each other out, we will. When we can influence people to do something a little differently, we can have that conversation. So you see the resolution before you, but it's basically just to agreeing that the school board, and by the way, the superintendent's included in this, so if we vote, you have to go, will participate in this organization. It's called the Rochester Tri Government Forums. Ms. Workman.
Yes. Will there be an opportunity to discuss the numbers of the, from each organization in the committee membership, because right now they are not equal?
There will be. In fact, I got a message today from City Council President Carlson saying that they wanted to include the city administrator, the mayor, and two council members, and the other groups would each have three, but she said that's all negotiable. This is very informal. I think it's non-binding, but it's just an agreement to work together, and we can absolutely get that fleshed out. There's going to be a kind of a preliminary discussion about that in August. I think it's August 18th is planned at this point, and the board can decide who our representatives will be, except the superintendent here in it. So there's that.
Do we know if the other two organizations have moved forward with this yet, or are they still in that same process?
The city council has agreed to it, and honestly, I don't know if the county commission has.
The county commission has not seen this document yet.
They haven't seen it yet?
No.
Okay. Well, they better get moving. Yes?
I think this is long overdue and so overdue that it actually used to be a thing, right? For those of you that have a longer memory than I do, didn't we used to have something like this a long time ago?
Yes.
Yes.
So I don't know what, whatever happened, but it's important to note that this isn't a brand-new concept. It's reinventing the wheel.
Then I think it's pretty much common sense. It's a briefing item at this point.
I move to action.
Good.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to be an action item. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It is now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to participate in Rochester's tri-government forums.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded in stereo at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We are at the end of the meeting, and unless there are any announcements, questions?
The time of the upcoming meeting?
Oh, thank you for that, yes. And I want to make sure I have this right. Our next meeting...
August 3rd?
I can't find it here. August 3rd will be at 4 o'clock. Heather, is that correct? It's going to be from 4 o'clock with a proposed any time of 6 o'clock. So for those folks who want to join their neighborhood, National Night Out, that'll be more convenient. And then the meeting after that will be August 17th at our regular time at 5:30. So it is now 7:19 PM, and thank you for being here and for hanging in there and for being here. Thank you. 7:19, and we are adjourned.